Good morning, everyone. We should probably get started. We're past our time. Can you hear me okay? Is my microphone working? All right. Good morning. It's 8:31 on September 23rd. We will bring the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Good morning. Commissioners Green, Antor, Morgan, Jones, Vice Chair Stuck, Commissioners Ponstein, Burl, Coleman, Breevy, Teal, Sparks, McLeod, Hennessy, Legrand, Volkowski, Womack, Woodin, Skaggs, Chair Bolter, Madam Chair, you have 16 members present and two coming in. Commissioners McLeod. Commissioner Sparks. Madam Chair, you have 18 members present, one absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to invocation. I'll call in Commissioner Antor.
Thank you. My invocation will be coming shortly, but I wanted just to mention a few things. You know, we've been doing invocations for as long as I've been here, and it's always been a moment of pride, for one, because not everybody does this. And I think it's always been a moment where we could kind of come together on some things, pray to God, who's our source for everything. But lately, it's been like, what do I pray for without offending somebody? I've got a lot of things on my mind that I personally would like to pray for, and then I realized I'm offending someone by praying for them. I'd like to pray for all the police officers in the state and in the country. I'd like to pray for them to make it home safe every night to their wives and kids. And then I realized there's a lot of people that don't feel that way about police officers. I'd love to be able to pray for the most vulnerable amongst us, including the unborn babies, who we don't seem to care for anymore in some cases. I don't want to offend anybody by praying for unborn babies. I'd love to be able to pray for all the people that are losing their jobs, including my son-in-law, because he's refusing to get a jab in the arm. I know that would be offensive. I'd love to pray for wisdom. We all pray for wisdom during these moments of invocation. I begin to wonder, what is wisdom within the framework of a political setting? Wisdom to have the ability to threaten, coerce, manipulate otherwise well-intentioned people and institutions for political favor or expeditions. Is that the wisdom? Ability, the wherewithal to bastardize our political process, usurp laws, create division, mistrust, and hate to advance political aspirations, platforms, or agendas. Is that wisdom? I'm afraid that's where we're morphing, so I'm not going to pray for any of that. The only wisdom I care to put forward is the wisdom that comes out of the Bible. And when the disciples were confused on how to pray, they asked Jesus Christ, "How do we pray?" And He gave them the Lord's Prayer, which is very simple, but it's devoid of rabbit trails. And I would ask everybody in this room, including the people behind me, to please pray the Lord's Prayer with me. And when we get to the point, are we trespassing, or are we debtors? Let's go with trespassers. And I'd like to pray that right now. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespassers, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. We are on to item five, public comment related to agenda items only. Do we have any public comment regarding an agenda item today? Seeing none, we are on to item six, consent agenda, and I will call in Commissioner Antor for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move the consent agenda.
Support. Moved by Commissioner Antor, support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan. Jones. Vice Chair Stuck. Commissioners Ponstein. Burl. Coleman.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Teal. Sparks. McLeod. Hennessy. Legrand. Volkowski. Womack. Woodin. Skaggs. Chair Bolter. Madam Chair, you have 19 yeses, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to item seven, resolutions, and we are calling Commissioner Sparks for a motion for seven a.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move 2021 current unmet needs funding reallocation by the Administrator's Office to today's date.
Moved by Commissioner Sparks, support by Commissioner Commissioner Breevy. Questions or comments on Resolution 86 today? Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a brief disclosure. While there is not a direct financial benefit to myself, ELC is a prospective tenant of my employer, though the grant funding that will be allocated will not be put towards the payment of that potential lease. Thank you.
Any other questions today? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 86, Commissioners Green. Antor. Morgan. Jones. Vice Chair Stuck. Commissioners Ponstein. Burl. Coleman.
Yes.
Breevy. Teal. Sparks. McLeod. Hennessy. Legrand. Volkowski. Womack. Woodin. Skaggs. Chair Bolter. Madam Chair, you have 19 yeses, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 86 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to seven B now. I'll call in Commissioner Woodin for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move adoption of Resolution 87 of today's date to initiate action to increase the lake level of Dean Lake, and it be improved by an outlet. Comes to us from the Drain Commissioner.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Woodin, support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on Resolution 87 today? Commissioner Womack.
Quick question for the Drain Commissioner.
Welcome, Drain Commissioner Yonker.
Glad to be here.
Yes, I have two questions. When it says the $10,000 annually, is that going to be a continuation that never comes back to the board? Or when they say annually, is there any sunset date on these funds being raised for that evaluation of the lake level for Dean Lake?
Well, the valuation will then, well, the valuation has been pretty much completed, but there will be some reporting that has to be done and permitting with Eagle. And then from there goes the Circuit Court. Circuit Court does make the final decision on what that level is. And I'm doing this for you because this is your lake level. I'm just your, as I said at the committee yesterday, I'm your grunt. So, yeah, no, that, when the project is completed, the assessment goes away.
Okay. And the last question, and I know this is very important work. I'm very happy that this is being done. When it comes to the engineering costs, of course, we're going to incur some of that under your budget.
That all gets assessed to the lake.
So, in here, when it talked about what some of this would be used, I could have, so I read some that it would be for attorney fees for helping you with the Circuit Court. Preparations. And some would be for the engineering to do some of that evaluation, and then the property owners would take over engineering?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. This will function a lot like our drains do. The Drain Office puts, and the county puts the initial costs, and then when the project is wrapped up, then it is assessed out. We have to assess it by the end of the year. We can't go beyond two years.
All right. Thank you, and thank you for your service, sir.
Any other questions for the Drain Commissioner regarding 87? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 87, Commissioners Green. Antor. Morgan. Jones. Vice Chair Stuck. Commissioners Ponstein. Burl. Coleman. Breevy. Teal. Sparks. McLeod. Hennessy. Legrand. Volkowski. Womack. Woodin. Skaggs. Chair Bolter. Madam Chair, you have 19 yeses, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 87 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to seven C, and I'll call in Commissioner Morgan for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Resolution 88. It's also from the Drain Commission. We have a few of those today. It's for a special assessment for Pine Lake.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Morgan, support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on Resolution 88 today? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 88, Commissioners Green. Antor. Morgan. Jones. Vice Chair Stuck. Commissioners Ponstein. Burl. Coleman. Breevy. Teal. Sparks. McLeod. Hennessy. Legrand. Volkowski. Womack. Woodin. Skaggs. Chair Bolter. Madam Chair, you have 19 yeses, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 88 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to seven D, and I will again call in Commissioner Morgan. You're busy today. Call Commissioner Morgan again, earning your keep.
This is Resolution 89. It's from the Drain Commission again. It's for a special assessment for Ziggin Fuss Lake. And if you don't know where that is, it's just north of M-57, and, you know, so it's a small little lake on old. Yeah, it's way up there, but it's a nice little lake, so.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Morgan, support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on Resolution 89? Commissioner Antor.
Does Ziggin Fuss really have three yeses?
Any other questions? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. On the motion to adopt Resolution 89er, Commissioners Green. Antor. Morgan. Jones. Vice Chair Stuck. Commissioners Ponstein. Burl. Coleman. Breevy. Teal. Sparks. McLeod. Hennessy. Legrand. Volkowski. Womack. Woodin. Skaggs. Chair Bolter. Madam Chair, you have 19 yeses, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 89er is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to seven E, and again, Commissioner Morgan.
I'd like to move Resolution 90 from the Drain Commission, and it's for five lakes special assessment.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Morgan, support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on Resolution 90 today? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 90, Commissioners Green. Antor. Morgan. Jones. Vice Chair Stuck. Commissioners Ponstein. Burl. Coleman. Breevy. Teal. Sparks. McLeod. Hennessy. Legrand. Volkowski. Womack. Woodin. Skaggs. Chair Bolter. Madam Chair, you have 19 yeses, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 90 is adopted.
All right, we are on to seven F, and I will call in Commissioner Breevy for a motion.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution 91 of today's date, Strong Beginnings Latina Grant from Spectrum Health Foundation in the Health Department.
Moved by Commissioner Breevy, support by Commissioner Womack. Questions or comments on 91? Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I had a question and a comment. One of my comments is just to thank you for the work with Strong Beginnings, because in 2004, when you started, I was doing some community radio shows back then, and the infant mortality rate for African-American non-live births was higher, I believe, even in Wayne County then, or very close. And that's come down significantly, so I just want to thank you for all the work that Strong Beginnings has done. And now with Latina births being 6.1, I believe, deaths compared to white women at 4.1, has the African-American number come down so much? And I know you continue to do work for people of color and minorities and those at risk, but has that number come down significantly enough that a lot of the marketing and advertising that's going towards the Latina and not other people of color, did that have to do with the numbers coming down with the African rate, and the 6.1 is extremely high for Latina?
I have Gail Brink, Gail Brink, who's from the Health Department.
Good morning. Yes, we have about, we have five Strong Beginnings programs through Spectrum Health. One of them is for the Latina Grant. The rest of them focus on the black population, and we have seen in the numbers that we looked at, about a 52% reduction from the 2005 through the 2018 is the last numbers we have at this point that have been put together. So, we have seen a comparable decrease in the number of deaths per live birth for the black community, for the black population as well.
Okay. Just wanted this opportunity to thank you for your work, especially in the African-American community, and we are praying that we have the same great results in the Latina community for those mothers and those children and those fathers.
Any other, Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. Was there any specific area that, where we bridged a gap with either Latino or the African-American community, one kind of red-flagged area that we were falling way short on, or is it kind of a comprehensive, little bit of everything added up to?
It's a little bit of everything. I mean, there's all kinds of things like housing, or access to healthy foods, or access to health care. I mean, all of those things are issues that we deal with, but it's, you know, to say it's one particular thing, that's really not possible. It's a lot of many things that are, you know, that are affecting that.
Okay, one other quick question. I hadn't heard of my child insurance in a long time. Is that still something the state offers?
Yes, they do. It's, I believe they may have changed the name of that, but it is still available, yes.
Okay, and you guys make that available too?
Yes, yep. Yeah, we have navigators that help people get enrolled in that, so, yes.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions on Resolution 91 today? I just, I will just need to abstain on 91 and 92 due to a professional conflict, unfortunately, because it's a great program. So, with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 91, Commissioners Green. Antor. Morgan. Jones. Vice Chair Stuck. Commissioners Ponstein. Burl. Coleman. Breevy. Teal. Sparks. McLeod. Hennessy. Legrand. Volkowski. Womack. Woodin. Skaggs. Chair Bolter. Madam Chair, you have 18 yeses, zero nays, and one abstention. The motion passes. Resolution 91 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to seven G, and I will call on Commissioner Womack for a motion.
Yes, I would like to move Resolution 92 of today's date, Pay for Success Strong Beginnings Program, Spectrum Health Hospitals.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Womack, support by Commissioner Woodin. Questions or comments on Resolution 92? Commissioner Woodin.
Only to give credit where credit's due, the support came from Commissioner Burl.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Burl. Sorry, you both were coming from the same direction. Questions or comments on 92 today? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 92, Commissioners Green. Antor. Morgan. Jones. Vice Chair Stuck. Commissioners Ponstein. Burl. Coleman. Breevy. Teal. Sparks. McLeod. Hennessy. Legrand. Volkowski. Womack. Woodin. Skaggs. Chair Bolter. Madam Chair, you have 18 yeses, zero nays, one abstention. The motion passes. Resolution 92 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Three more. We're on to seven H, and again, I'll call Commissioner Womack for a motion.
Yes, I would like to move Resolution 93 of today's date, Winter 2021 Dedicated Millet Property Tax Levy.
Moved by Commissioner Womack, support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on Resolution 93 today? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 93, Commissioners Green. Antor. Morgan. Jones. Vice Chair Stuck. Commissioners Ponstein. Burl. Coleman. Breevy. Teal. Sparks. McLeod. Hennessy. Legrand. Volkowski. Womack. Woodin. Skaggs. Chair Bolter.
That's what I thought, too. I am a yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Pretty sure. Did you double count? Did you double count?
I do have an accurate tally. Madam Chair, you have 19 yeses, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 93 is adopted.
Yes, Siri is not a commissioner, just so you know. All right, we are on to seven I, and I will call in Commissioner Breevy for a motion.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution 94 of today's date, Revenue Bonds Series 2021 from the Gerald R. Ford International Airport Authority.
Moved by Commissioner Breevy, support by Commissioner Womack. Questions or comments on Resolution 94 today? Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, a few weeks back, I got delayed by six hours out of the Gerald R. Ford Airport, and there's no airport in the world that I'd rather be stuck in, you know, for that length of time. Our airport facilities are awesome, and yet with this agenda item, given the uncertainty in the airline world today, and I just don't think it's a prudent move to add to an already high debt load out of the airport, so I'll be a no.
All right, any other questions? Commissioner Ponstein.
Well, my question is, we've always used traditional bonding and investing, and the money out there is changing every day. Have we ever looked at other areas to raise the money to revenues, like the, maybe the private equity markets?
Got members of the airport team here. Former Commissioner Tor.
Good morning, Commissioners.
You got the entourage here today.
Oh, you do. My name's Dan Kornick. I'm the Chair of the Airport Board. With me today are Tori Richardson, our President's CEO over here, and then we have Matt Zealstrom, who's our CFO. So, to answer your question, first of all, we were here in May asking about a refinancing issue for bonding, and we ended up not doing that. We ended up getting a traditional loan from a bank. So, instead of saving $2.2 million, we saved $2.3 million. So, we do look at all those different opportunities, but specifically.
Yeah, we're certainly looking at those. Obviously, we're always wanting to be good, you know, stewards of the financial resources, so we do look at all those options every time. And as our Board Chair mentioned, we were able to save quite a bit of money just going through a traditional loan as opposed to the refunding and refinancing through bonds. So, it saved us on overall, in the last seven years of the bond payments, but also in underwriting fees, et cetera. So, we saved about another $70,000 to $80,000 in that, in that area.
Thank you for that, and I appreciate the work. It's just that I heard someone speak the other day on how people invest and how pension funds and other groups invest, and there seems to be a switch into the private equity markets and away from the traditional financing method. So, just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah, just, first of all, I apologize that you had any wait, and certainly don't want you to have to wait six hours in any airport, so we apologize for that. But, yeah, our recovery has been strong. I would say much stronger than what we even had forecasted. So, we're at about 80% right now. Actually, July numbers came in at 98% of where we were in 2019. So, the need for this project has come online a whole lot quicker than what we originally thought. We did a very conservative forecast with a low, medium, and high range, and we're beating the high-range forecast on the recovery. So, we do understand that there are some pain points in the terminal. This is, again, you know, a situation that we encountered pre-pandemic, and we've got full support of the airlines to put this project back in place and get it completed. Keep in mind, it's a two-year construction window, so we're talking the end of 2023, you know, before we see some relief from putting this project in place. But it's been a strong recovery.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I just want to thank you for all your work, and especially Mr. Kornike. And being a world traveler per se, having the chance to travel, one thing I can tell when I land in a city is the vibrancy of that city. It begins to hit me soon as I come into the airport. And when I would travel back to Grand Rapids, when I didn't actually live here, born and raised, but moved away for almost a decade or more. So, coming back to Grand Rapids, landing in that airport, and just seeing how it had expanded, it did put me in a shock when I got to the rest of Grand Rapids that expanded. And I think a lot of times when the airport and you're dealing with weight, it has a lot more to do with the airlines, and specifically, it has to do with safety. There are so many times we wish if people knew there might be something wrong, or we got to switch a pilot, that they took that and did that, because if there's ever a plane crash, we look back at every second, every decision. I also think that because the bonding is guaranteed by the net revenue, I think it's just a good investment, and it's part of the heartbeat of Kent County, and I'm going to be supporting it today.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Congratulations. I've been on that board since 2011, and the changes have just been great. I just want to reiterate, this wasn't just something we decided to do because it was a great thing to do. We had meetings with our stakeholders, and I got to tell you, there's risk in everything. There's risk in everything. And right now, I think that with that airport and adding these gates, we're doing it because there's a need to do it. And with the economic impact that airport gives to this community, I think we need to support it. So, I don't like to give away my votes early, but I'm pretty supportive.
You're easy on this one. I feel like you're good. I'm so shocked. Commissioner Stuck.
Thank you, Chair. So, my understanding is that over the years, we've approved a number of bonds for the airport projects, and even during the course of the pandemic, which had a significant impact on operations, if I understand a significant impact on operations. If I understand, you have not failed to make any of these bond payments and have been able to fulfill on those obligations without leaving us as the county to have to step in and take care of that, right?
That's absolutely correct, Commissioner Steck. And I would just say, you know, to keep in mind, we dropped 97% last year, and we still made every payment on time and in full without issue. And so there's always that possibility of the county needing to backstop us. In reality, the probability of that is extremely low for the issue I just mentioned. And then also, just to the Commissioners' questions, there's really four lines of defense. Airport revenues first, a reserve fund second, third for the county, but fourth for that is the airport resolution that says we're still going to pay the county back every penny that you would have to cash flow. So it's really a cash flow issue if it ever came to that. So again, probability is very, very slim that the county would need to step in.
And I accept Commissioner Morgan's observation that everything involves some risk, but in my judgment, this is a relatively low risk and a very good investment. So, thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, you guys. I've been watching the growth over the last, well, as long as I've been here, and it's been amazing. It's a great airport. I used to be one of those guys that drive over to Flint, or Detroit, or even Midway, just to save a few bucks.
You used to call that leakage.
Yeah.
And we're improving on that.
Oh, it's been fantastic. Mike, I guess Roger kind of touched on this a little bit. I know, like, the charter schools have recently gone away from bonding, and they actually came into these chambers to vote on a situation where they're going with traditional loans. Now, what's your trigger point as far as whether you bond or go through a traditional loan? Is it cost, or is it, you know, just the risk involved in your mind?
There's actually a couple things, and I can let Matt, our controller, talk a little bit more, because he was closer to it. But really, it also has to be a sweet spot for the other individuals that would be helping to finance it. So as our Board Chair mentioned, you know, we just did a refund and refinance with a loan as opposed to issuing a bond, and that was the right type of agreement and instrument for the banks to be very interested in. They told us if it was any longer term or a higher dollar amount, they probably would not be interested in jumping into that market. So it's a combination of the cost as well as who would be interested in taking on that financing. I don't know if you want to add anything more to that, Matt?
No, so that refunding issue was about $20 million over seven years, and that was much more palatable for a private banking than a 30-year honorary million dollars we're talking about with this. We have consultants that we work with to guide us in which direction to go, and we always are open to private equity as. Commissioner Ponstein?
I believe. At this point, we are looking at a traditional.
Well, speaking of tradition, it seems like you guys are taking the same path of the fiscal responsibility that we've always done here in Kent County in this board, and I appreciate that answer very much. And keep up the good work. Like I say, the differences over the years have been amazing. Dan, you're doing a great job as Chair, and I just really appreciate our airport. Thank you.
A lot better than the old ones.
Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I, you know, am a member of the Airport Board as well, along with Commissioner Morgan, and it's fantastic to see the passenger numbers increase, you know, month over month. The airport is in a very good position, especially for its size, you know, comparatively. It's one of the leaders in the nation. And something to keep in mind, too, is back before the pandemic, I think it was like February, or maybe one of our last March meetings before the pandemic, you know, there was conversation about this bonding being a possibility and working through it. They're coming to us today with a lower amount. The project scope is slightly different. So, you know, they're still proceeding with caution. They have stakeholders, like the airlines, on board with this project. It's very important for the continuation of growth in our community. There is a high need for these new gates. So, you know, it's definitely an improvement that's needed, and it will help our airport continue to grow and bring people into our community here. Something else to reflect on, our parking garage. That is a facility that is well-used, well-managed, and, you know, really helps the airport out. That was something that was brought on during a recession. And, you know, so that's a measure that was taken, that was a risk that was taken at that time, and it's really been a huge asset for the airport. So keep that in mind as you vote. We all take risks. This is a very important move for the airport, and I highly support it. So, and I encourage all of you, too, as well.
Any other questions or comments today? Commissioner LaGrande.
I'll be quick. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just also want to express my support for this. I think that any investment in infrastructure, and this is an opportunity for us to back investing in the infrastructure of our community and the amenity that it is to businesses who want to continue to do business here, or perhaps to start to do business here. It's, we are on the cusp of such huge growth. We're in the middle of huge growth, and I think it's needed, and I really appreciate your work, and obviously, the really clear and cautious attitude that you've taken towards it. So, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments today? Commissioner Coleman.
Just a quick clarification. I was happy to wait that time, because they were just keeping me safe from thunderstorms rolling through, so.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 94, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
No.
Breevy.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
LaGrande.
Yes.
Polkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 18 yays, one nay. The motion passes. Resolution 94 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 7J, which is our last resolution today, and I will call on Commissioner Breevy again for a motion.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution 95 of today's date, Revenue Bonds Series 2021 Mary Freebed Hospital. Support.
Moved by Commissioner Breevy, support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on Resolution 95 today? Commissioner Steck.
Yeah, just one comment. As I understand, this bond is not a bond, unlike the last one, that would default back to the county, and so this is not an obligation assumed by the county.
Any other questions or comments on Resolution 95 today? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 95, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
LaGrande.
Yes.
Polkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 95 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to Item 8, Public Comment Related to Any General County Matter. Anyone would like to speak who have three minutes, please give us your name and address. Oh, do we, oh, okay, I didn't know we were doing that. Would you like to please call the cards in order?
Sure. We have Elizabeth Johnson from Cedar Springs.
Good morning. Yep, no problem. Hi. Um, so, in these times, and actually in all times, truth is needed above everything else, especially from those that we seek advice from. I have an issue with your in-house counsel, and I'd like you guys to investigate it for me and actually get back with me on it. About a month ago, I had a conversation with a couple of Commissioners, and they told me that their in-house counsel had advised them that they cannot fire any administrator, anybody that is appointed by this counsel. And I got to thinking about that, and I went home, and I stood on that, and I thought, no, wait, there's something wrong with that, because I've read the Constitution, and I understand that we are self-governance. We the people hold the power, and we delegate it to you. You are our voice, okay? And I'm talking about unchecked power here. If you have somebody who is operating unilaterally with no one able to hold back the strings or hold back their reins, that's a problem. That's an issue. Furthermore, so I did a simple Google search. I'm looking into this, right? I found that Michigan Codified Law states that you do have the power to fire and advise, or to hire appointed officers. And then furthermore, there's cases from our Michigan Supreme Court that state that if you have the power to, if you have the power to appoint, you also carries with the power to remove. Also, the power to appoint is also the power, it's just that you can't, your power to fire them stands no matter what. And now, if your in-house counsel has told you differently, they're lying to you. Furthermore, Michigan Codified Law 4611 states that in order to fire an appointed official, all you need is incompetence, misconduct, and neglect of duty. And I think that we can show that oftentimes. In a particular situation, I think, if you wanted further information, I can show you where you can meet those thresholds, meet that standard. I'm suggesting to you that your in-house counsel is compromised, that they're either lying to you, or they're serving their own personal agenda rather than yours. So, look, they know the law, okay? If I can simply Google search this, you know they know the law. So what can you do? If you, I'd like you to further investigate it, and if you do find that you have in-house counsel that is compromised, or they have a personal agenda, or there's a conflict of interest, you can do three things, all three, actually. You can fire, you can file a complaint with the disciplinary authorities in your state bar, okay? So you can go to the Michigan Supreme Court, and you can look on their website, and you can file an official complaint. And you also have a malpractice lawsuit on your hands, and you can also use us as your plaintiffs, because we have detrimentally relied on this information. I'm looking for clarification on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Tricia Apoff from East Grand Rapids.
Welcome, Tricia.
Good morning. My name is Tricia Apoff. First, I want to thank Commissioner Bolter for taking a baby step in the right direction with her press release. Commissioner Antor used Christianity this morning to get on his soapbox. So before I read this letter, let me ask, as a daughter, granddaughter, and niece of pastors of Assembly of God churches, what would Jesus do? In this letter, we Kent County residents are appealing to you publicly to take a stand against violence and aggression in the forms of both threat and action. Following the legal issuance of the mask mandate policy, Dr. Adam London, sorry, I'm nervous, and the other public servants working in the Kent County Health Department have been targeted with a campaign of aggression and intimidation, causing them to fear for their own safety as well as the safety of their families. The behavior and the mannerisms observed from the some Commissioners in the August 26, 2021 meeting, working session, and the September 9, 2021 regular Commissioner meeting, did not make it clear that the Kent County Board of Commissioners never condoned violence. Regardless of whether you agree with the mask order or not, we can all agree that these threats of violence are not unlawful, are not only unlawful, but also disruptive to a functioning society. We request that you display strong moral leadership and take a stand against those in our society who would do harm to those that they disagree with. We request that you issue a statement backed by all of you, by all Commissioners condemning all forms of threats and intimidation made against local, state, and federal public servants. We would also request you do this soon, so as to give Dr. London and all other officials and administrators who are being threatened the peace of mind that county leadership is concerned for their safety. You'll find a list of signatures of Kent County residents, not just blue signatures, red signatures, too, of residents that wish to see you take action, concerned residents of Kent County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have Pete Walsh from Grand Rapids.
Welcome, Pete.
Good morning. I am Pete Walsh from Grand Rapids, Michigan. I know some of you, and it's good to be here today. I don't think I've spoke to you before, but I was inspired a few weeks ago by watching what went on over at DeVos Hall, both live and going back and looking what I missed on video. I'd first like to congratulate you for your efforts to comply with the Open Meetings Act under especially difficult circumstances. And Vice Chair Steck, you did a good job handling a very difficult situation. But I'm inspired to come here both by what I saw and what I've heard since. That display of the public comments was 95 to 100%, or probably 99%, just embarrassing for Kent County, absolutely embarrassing. The ignorance, the threats, just way over the top. I was inspired to come here today because a lot of us out there support Dr. London. A lot of us think he's doing a wonderful job. A lot of us think it was extremely courageous to issue that mask mandate because we need it. Personally, I don't think the school should have opened. I thought they should have stayed closed. But to at least do a mask mandate for the kids that can't get vaccinated, to oppose that, I just, for God's sake, don't understand it. Don't understand it for a minute. But the other thing I'm upset about is because what we've learned is that since then, there's been threats, further threats. God, there were threats that day. Some of the stuff I saw that day in that meeting was just outrageous, over the top, and those people should have been investigated by the Sheriff's Department before they left the building. But since then, I understand somebody tried to run Dr. London off the road with their car. That's a felony. It's a felony. What we understand is that the Sheriff's Department won't investigate it because he didn't have a license plate number. Now, I don't know whether that's true or not. That's just the rumor on the street. But I've practiced law in this community for over 40 years. A lot of cases involving the Sheriff's Department, a lot of cases involving where they don't have a license plate number. The claim that they won't investigate something because they don't have a license plate number is pure malarkey. There's, the other thing is, I looked at the agenda last night before I came here. If it's true this man has been run off the road, or attempted to be run off the road, and if it's true he's receiving these threats, he should be, have 24/7 protection from the county. Now, I don't know whether he has it or not. That's not been made public. Maybe he already has it. But if he doesn't have it, that should have been an agenda item today. There should have been a resolution to approve the funds to supply him with 24/7 protection, and it's an embarrassment that it's, if, if he doesn't have that, it's embarrassing that that resolution is not on the agenda today. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Pete. Anyone else on the cards?
We have Michelle Brown from East Grand Rapids.
Michelle, welcome.
Good morning. So I, too, along with the 800-plus people who have signed, were you, the Commissioners, to write, all sign, and make public, and with a commitment to condemn violence both in threat and action, and here's why. The threat of violence and the act of violence towards staff of our health department is now well-known in public video of your August 26 Commissioner meeting and in various news articles. These occurrences are not limited to our health department. Earlier this summer, a school board member in Grand Haven also resigned due to harassment. When our health department issued, when our health department issued mandate expires, the school district leadership will bear the burden of figuring out precautions to put in place to keep in-person schools up and running. For our health department, this type of letter is reactive, but for our school leadership, it's going to be. Governor Whitmer recently quoted, "Every one of us has the tools we need to stay safe, and that is why we're encouraging these decisions to be made at the local level." So the evidence from those tools, I'm talking about the KISD COVID dashboard, I'm talking about page six of 10 of our COVID dashboard for our county. They're showing our high schools, where masks mandating, or excuse me, masks are optional. They're showing that the schools, the high schools that have been most disrupted by COVID have been Cedar Springs, Caledonia, Kentwood, Rockford, and Sparta. All of those school districts have less than 50% vaccination rate for ages 12 to 17. In contrast, East Grand Rapids has, East Grand Rapids has, so far, zero cases and 100% vaccination rate for the ages of 12 to 17. Parents of EGR have and likely will follow through on making, with the vaccinations, making. with the vaccinations, making their school board, their district school board, they're gonna make their job easier when it comes to deciding what precautions to put into place. The other school districts that I mentioned, those school district leadership are gonna have a tough challenge going forward. Need your support. They need you to say no to violence. We won't put up with it in our county. Debate, yes, hostile debate if it comes down to it, but no to violence. Everyone that participates in this debate deserves the right to go home, feel safe going home, feel safe for their family, participate in this debate to keep our kids in school.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That's it for the cards.
Anyone else for public comment related to general county matters today? All right, seeing none, we will move on to official commissioner reports. Do we have reports today? Commissioner Breevey?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Um, I just wanted to report, um, our Municipal Solid Waste Advisory Committee, which is made up of local municipal leaders. Um, we met this week and we discussed the, um, plan for the Sustainable Business Park. So we're continuing to spread that news and share the information and answer any questions that may come up. And I just wanted to remind all of you too, if there's, um, questions or, you know, concerns, please bring them to me. I'd be happy to help address that as we go through the process.
Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. It's been a busy few weeks between board meetings. So I have one, two, three, four, five, six bullet points. I'll try to keep succinct. The first one is the CAA Liaison Committee met, including Commissioner Teal and Commissioner Green. We will have a regular meeting schedule and I will be the chair of that committee. It is a committee that's made up of three county representatives and three city representatives. The intent is to see if we can alter the chair position between county and city every other year because there isn't a co-chair option with that committee. The township supervisors met. They had a guest speaker from our Kent Conservation District. They spent quite a bit of time covering the invasive bittersweet. So if you and your local communities aren't aware of this invasive one, I'll leave this in the back for you to take a look at. Uh, they do hope to have Al as the guest speaker in the near future, but just thought I'd tell you that that was a, a well-attended meeting and lots of, uh, good local discussions. Experienced Grand Rapids met. As we know, our prize is going on. It is very well-attended. It is a great addition to our community for getting more heads in beds. I myself hosted Friends yesterday and took a vacation day and helped the economy with lunches and coffees and, uh, talked to people along the way that looked a little lost and directed them to places to see because you look out for that when you're an ambassador for our community, right? Uh, along those lines, I want to add too that the, uh, Grand Rapids DDA was mentioned. They are going to be continuing to wrap up their winter activities, which have been very popular, uh, in the past. With Experienced Grand Rapids, if you haven't seen the Dream and Grand and Go brochure, I have one for each of you, so I'll make sure you get that in your box. Uh, nice QR codes. You'll see these at the airport. You'll see these at hotels. And we're gonna leave some here too for visitors that come to the county. All right, Kent County Parks Foundation. We had a very successful Something's Grilling. Thank you for commissioners who attended and supported. Uh, and, and Al, we had Commissioner Steck, Commissioner Bolter, and Al in attendance. It was a wonderful way to celebrate, uh, the Kennedys who have been a great supporter of our county parks. We do have our bus tour following this meeting for those commissioners that have RSVP'd. If you didn't RSVP, I've asked Sam to get a executive summary to those who aren't able to attend. West Michigan Sports Commission met. Emily and I were there. Commissioner Breevey and I attended that. And there is a lot going on as Canary is engaged to look at additional projects focused on the, uh, Rockford, the Meyer, uh, sports complex. And I just want to finalize and my comments with the budget. So for those of you who've been carrying around your twenty-twenty-one proposed budget, that one, like I do, that one is about to close off as we look at the twenty-twenty-two proposed budget. This is in your, in your holders in the back. So please keep it with you as we go forward into work sessions and additional meetings because it's a document that we'll be referring to. Thank you, Jeff, Marvin, finance folks for getting that to us early to take a look at. And that's the end of my reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Wocowski?
Um, excuse me. Thank you, Chair. Uh, just wanted to report that the Front of the Court Advisory Committee did meet, uh, a week ago Monday. Continued to, uh, monitor the work of the Front of the Court. Um, as a small spoiler alert, um, the annual report is on its way to the Legislative Human Resources Committee. The Front of the Court has, um, uh, completed that, you know, continuing to monitor, um, the work with, uh, the deputies that go out into the community. So again, the spoiler is, um, it's positive impact. So, um, but you'll see all those details in that full report. Also, um, I don't know if I'm stealing somebody else's thunder, but the applications for committees and such do at the end of the month. There is one, uh, opening on Front of the Court Advisory Committee. So sorry, Commissioner Steck, you can repeat me later.
We need more applications, so.
Need more applications. Well, I'm just pushing for Front of the Court Advisory Committee. You can talk about the others.
Commissioner Skaggs?
Thank you, Chair. Just want to note that the Ready by Five Resident Proposal Review Board is meeting this week. Um, in fact, that's where I'll be headed, uh, afterwards instead of the bus tour, which I would have thoroughly enjoyed. Um, we have applicants, uh, who have requested, uh, slightly over eight million dollars to support our children and, and mothers and families, uh, in the coming year. Special thanks to the First Step staff for putting this all together. They do an incredible job, um, as well as to the, the experts and especially the parents that are on this board. Um, you know, sometimes, um, sometimes there's mixed results. Um, maybe we're seeing that, uh, in other issues. Um, when, when people are picked, um, without a, a great depth of experience on, on governing. Um, and these parents bring so much to the table and are so enlightening to us um, that people who are going, people that are clients, people that are going through this in their lived experience, um, are really informing this. And we've got a great new crop this year and we're off to a wonderful start and we'll have reports to you soon.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So thank you, Commissioner Wocowski, for doing the introduction. Uh, just reminding folks that, uh, we are into the board appointment, the committee appointment season. Uh, that process is now with the open opportunity to, uh, to submit your applications. I encourage all of you to disseminate that information through your networks so that we can get as many applications as possible. Uh, those will close for most of these positions at the end of this month. So, uh, you have a, a little time yet. And then we'll proceed at the LHR for purposes of, uh, doing our interviews and coming back with recommendations. Uh, secondly, um, it is budget season indeed. Um, the LRE, which is our regional PIHP, prepaid inpatient health plan, for those of you wondering. Uh, at any rate, we did approve our budget for twenty-twenty-two at a little over four hundred million dollars. And then followed up, uh, at Network One Eighty, uh, the board also approved our twenty-twenty-two budget at a little approximately two hundred million. So it'll be an interesting year in the behavioral health world.
Any other official reports today? Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, uh, to let everybody know once again, uh, I think our eight hundred system is up and operating. Boy, it's been a long, long process. But, uh, hopefully we're gonna get to the point where, um, all these agencies will be able to communicate. Casualty incident. Head and shoulders above, uh, RHF systems. Next steps, uh, once again, governance, uh, we've accomplished most of our goals. So we're gonna have to make a decision. Seeing how both the city and the county. What our next move of governance is. Hopefully we can start sorting that out.
Good. I think that project started when I first came, I mean, it's, is eight hundred megahertz still?
I, I've been involved with the central.
Been a long time. Yeah, okay. Yep. Just making sure the technology's still, uh, applicable. Any other official reports today? All right, seeing none, we will move on to miscellaneous. I do want to remind our board members that, um, we got a little, little liberal with our, uh, comments last time and, and we do, do need to address the chair. That is the rule on page twelve, three point three. So we are not engaging members of the public. We are addressing the chair and your miscellaneous comments. So with that, uh, Commissioner Teal? Are you gonna be emailing something, did you say? Yeah, okay, great. Commissioner Legrand? Can't hear you.
Done. Sorry.
There we go.
There I am. Okay.
My bad.
So I had the privilege of attending one of the election drive-alongs that, um, Madam Clerk, uh, Lisa Lyons set up and Jared Uzarsky, who is our elections, uh, runs the elections department here. And it was wonderful. And, uh, we had a, a few of us there. And I don't know how many of you commissioners took part in any of those events, but, uh, it is so essential, um, especially given events of this year, last year, going into next year when we're gonna have another big election season. So important for our constituents to know how safe, how secure our elections are. And I would urge you to communicate with your constituents. And if you have any questions, Jared Uzarsky is the man to go to. It is incredible to see what the process is, to see the commitment to safe and secure elections, what it looks like. And, um, there's a lot of great information to share and I feel like it's really important to share it. So I want to thank you for doing that. It was a wonderful experience and, um, it's, it's important information to get out. Thank you.
Any other miscellaneous today? Ms. Ponsstein?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So, like you, Chair, and I have been getting a lot of correspondence over the email. And for some reason, because I haven't signed a petition to denounce violence that somehow I hate Dr. London and, and I don't care about the community. And that couldn't be further from the truth. If the public doesn't realize is that every time I take a new term in office, I take an oath of office. And in that oath of office, I pledge that not only will I defend the Constitution, but I'll also defend the laws of the state. And the laws of the state specifically say that violence against others is not allowed. What I'm seeing is that this, uh, petition is just another wedge that we want to put between the two political parties. And in my, going on forty-two years now in public office, I've never seen anything like it. And this division's getting bigger and bigger. And the ability for local governments to govern is gonna get more and more difficult. I too have had threats on my life. And over my span, I've gotten threats from the ICE protesters. I've got threatens from the Black Lives Matter protesters. I got threats when we closed schools or reduced busing. And I could go on and on and on. And that's part of public service. A lot of the issues that we are dealing with are passionate. Sometimes they're about defending what the parents think that's right for their children. And sometimes in passion, things are said wrong or spoken right. They're not in front of us. Most of them are nervous, maybe a little intimidated. But they don't have a teleprompter on it with every exact word that you need to say that would be politically correct and not offend anyone. So it is a tough job, but that's a job that we took and when we took that oath of office. But the claim to come to me that somehow I support violence because I won't sign this petition. I mean, I'd be signing petitions every single day because every single day, the people of law enforcement put their lives online, get threats, get run off the road. I would be signing those proclamation every day. As a whole, I oppose violence. I stated that when I took that oath of office. And for some of you that somehow feel that we don't show enough appreciation, I would suggest that maybe those that are sitting on the Finance Committee this time and those on the Legislative and Human Resource switch positions. Because I've been on the Al, you know, Legislation Committee for twelve of my thirteen years on this board. And we review, performance reviews from every single department in this county. And I have never heard once any commissioner, any chair, vice chair, speak ill of the people that work for us or run our departments. We do have questions. We may disagree. And may, though, though I may disagree with what Adam did with the fast, uh, face mandate, had nothing to do with science, had nothing to do with Adam. I come from a long previous history of lower government than this one right here. And I spent twenty-one years on a school board. And the number one complaint of school boards was other people telling us what to do. School boards have elected officials just like us, same walks of life. And you, I guess you could compare that some are better and some aren't. I don't, I'm not gonna be that judge. They were elected by the people. But they also are run by superintendents. And for the vast majorities of the school districts in the county, they all hold PhDs. Very intelligent. They know their school district. They know their parents. They know their kids. That's a local control. And I couldn't agree with the, someone who mentioned in public comment that the governor wants this to go local. Well, you can't get any more local than a school board. And we're above them telling them what to do. We can give them guidance. We can help them on safe practices. We can tell them what to do. But that's where, that's, you, you don't get much local control than that, that, well, maybe a planning commission, but, you know, this whole thing that this is an issue that somehow we feel that it's political gain for the two political parties is just, that's, that's the one thing when I made the jump to a partisan seat that I just can't stomach. So thank you for the little leeway, Chair. I might have went off the guidelines, but thank you.
Ms. Antor?
Thank you, Chair. I concur with a lot of what Commissioner Ponsstein just said. You know, today we had heard someone mention the fact, what would Jesus do? As if reciting Jesus or reaching out to Jesus is a bad thing. Um, but one of my favorite stories of Jesus is when he walked into the temple and kicked over the taxpayers, when he kicked over the taxpayers' tables. Yeah, it's on. So anyhow, there's all kinds of stories that we could reflect on. Um, you know, a lot of the stuff that's coming out, you know, CNN has been contacting us, uh, many national outlets regarding how the narrative is that we've thrown Dr. London underneath the bus. And, uh, I've been told by local news that you need to make a comment because the vast majority of people that showed up to DeVos Place were your constituents, meaning Sparta, Alpine, Algoma. And that couldn't be any further from the truth. I would say we had five percent of my constituents that were there. They were, they came from all over. So the attempt to pin me down is, is laughable, but it's also predictable. And I was actually moved by the hundreds of people that showed up and the level of professionalism that they showed considering what the government is trying to do to their rights for their kids' safety and well-being. And everybody was extremely well-behaved, extremely passionate. What's more important than your kids? The only thing that got people upset was when the parents in attendance were told, "Be patient. You're gonna have your opportunity to speak to Dr. London." And they were patient and they waited. They waited for us to get done. And then when it came time for the parents to finally be able to address the man behind the curtain, finally, um, he took off. He cited personal issues. He was afraid for his life. I'd like to remind him he was on a videotape. I don't know where he was. I, I don't understand that piece of it. What was he afraid of? And I also think that, like everybody else, the threats are ridiculous. I've gotten more vile phone calls in the last several days from people from Seattle, Washington. How are these dots being connected? Who's doing that? And as far as Adam London is concerned, I still consider him a friend of mine. I love the man. I've known him longer probably than a lot of people in this room. I've always thought he's a man of character. I think he's a really good family man, and I've always trusted his judgment. I still do. I just disagree with him on this. And I want to pledge to him and to our board that we will do everything we can to find the people that are threatening his life and his family's, family's lives. We cannot let that go. I want the subcommittee to look into all those threats. I want to obtain the 911 calls, the police reports. I need to know the jurisdictions where these things happened in. And we need to go, get to work on this. We can't just say, well, you know, we're going to forget about it. His life was threatened. And I don't hear anybody, especially in the media, saying we're going to go after. Instead, they're going after guys like me, on a completely false narrative, fake news, once again. There's so many stories that they could be tracking down that they choose not to. If I had a Health Department director being threatened with death, I think I would get on that story, find out when, where, how, who, you know? What are we, what are we trying to do here? So, Chair, I would like to make the comment that I think we need to look into the allegations, not brush them over. I tune getting out, you know, when I got my death threats and threats of intimidation that come every day, I wouldn't be able to play it in this room. I wouldn't want to offend anybody, but I took those immediately to the prosecutor's office and to the sheriff's department, and I filed a complaint. Not that I'm really worried about people coming out to my house, but if something did, like Chris Becker said, if something happens, we need to know the information. So I turned it all over within five minutes of getting those types of threats. So I want to take this to the next level on all these threats, every single death threat, and the incident where the lady was trying to run him off the road twice. I want those, all the transcripts that came out of those events, so we can figure out on Adam's behalf, who's behind it, and say, we're not going to tolerate it, and throw their asses in jail. Put them through the process, and hopefully that'll be the result. So those are my comments.
Any other miscellaneous today? Commissioner Breeby.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. You know, I said in our August 26 meeting that I, you know, supported the Health Department all along. I've served on the Community Health Advisory Committee since I was first on the board in 2015. I really value and appreciate anyone who works for the Health Department, and I think they do an amazing job. I do not condone violence that has occurred on all sides of the issue. I think it's totally out of place, but I think as leaders, we need to look at ourselves too. We're in a leadership position, and we should be held to a higher standard of the way that we communicate with people, the way we communicate on social media. People do not need to hear from us. They do not need to hear negativity. We're here to lead. We're here to do our job. I think we need to set aside the partisan differences that have been dividing us year over year, and we need to work together. This is a worldwide issue that we've been dealing with the last 18 months. Like, let's have some unity here. Let's not further divide our community by the words that you say. Thank you.
Any other miscellaneous today? Commissioner Steck.
Well, since we're venting a little bit today, I'll, I'll do my share of it as well. So I said something at the August 26 meeting, again, acknowledging my colleagues for, for the very difficult work of listening during that day. And I want to, again, publicly acknowledge those of my colleagues who have gone through the last month at least, and, and have listened intently and respectfully to multiple perspectives. I expect my experience is much like others. Over the course of this past month, I have been barraged by those who supported one perspective on what we do in the public statement of masking, and then I've heard from the other side of that perspective, and I continue to hear from both sides of that perspective. A lot of that communication is very respectful and thoughtful. A lot of that communication is not, on both sides of that equation. So for those of us that listened on the 26th particularly, I know that that was difficult. As county commissioners, that's probably the hardest job we have, is to be able to listen to our constituents. Whether we agree with everything they said, or whether we agree with nothing of what they said, our responsibility is to listen to all of our constituents. I would assert that when I took the oath of office as a commissioner, one of the things I did not commit to do, and that is to only represent, only listen to, and only care about people that agree with me. If that's all I did, I shouldn't be in this seat. I'd assert instead, I committed to listening to the entire spectrum of my community. And I know, my community is very diverse. If you go from the, from, what is it, Sand Lake in the north to Caledonia in the south, I'm sorry if I didn't quite get this out, we have almost every perspective represented in our county. And my job as a county commissioner, and I assert that all of our jobs as county commissioners, is listen and respect all of our constituents. We don't have to agree with them, but we did commit to listen to them. There's no way that we can accomplish our objective to advance the common good of this community if we don't. There's no way that we can fulfill on our statement of core values if we don't. So I acknowledge us, we've, we've had to go through some tough times in the last couple of weeks, listening to a very difficult debate over very challenging issues, but hang in there, keep at it. To the extent that some of this involves threats and intensity, I said on the 26th, and I'll say it again, I understand people feel very strongly about this issue, on both sides of the issue. And people that feel strongly about it, particularly if their children are at stake, are going to express themselves sometimes in not-so-nice-a-way. I got that. That's part of what we took on when we agreed to be commissioners, right? So despite that, and despite sitting there, and despite being called names now from both sides of this equation, I'm really struck how I could be a baby abuser from both sides, but I guess I was, and probably all of us are. So, but it's important. It's important. It's critical for us to be able to listen carefully and respectfully to all sides, and then work in our community to find ways of how do we come together? How do we find that common ground? How do we get forward in addressing not just people's personal interests, their concerns for their privacy, for their liberty, for their parental rights? How do we protect the public interest and balance against that, and what we need to do to protect and preserve our public health? Those are not easy equations. And for this point, I'll say, thank you, Lord, that, that is Adam London's job and not mine. But we need to be continuing to work with our community to bring them into that conversation, despite how intense, despite how passionate they may be, and even if we're offended from time to time. That's our job as commissioners. So that's all I wanted to say about that.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I just want to add, in the spirit of listening, it is worth noting that if you haven't seen it on Facebook, Adam's update recently did acknowledge that he did listen to that meeting in August, though he wasn't there via Zoom to listen to the comments. He acknowledged that he did watch it recorded, and I want to recognize that that was something that I had been chatting with our administration about to have done, and I commend him for taking the time to do that, because that was something that I think is really important. There were a lot of valuable comments and points made. People took a lot of time out of their schedule to address these points and concerns. I'm really glad that there was time for him to recognize that he, that they were heard by him. Thank you.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just brought this morning a couple pieces of data that I think are good news. I'd like to share. The first of the, the August Michigan data is out, and of those that have been vaccinated, there were about 10,000 cases of COVID, about 1,300 of those were hospitalized, and about 32 deaths. And you might say, well, how's that good news? The reason that's good news is that August was, you know, by and large, the Delta variant. And if you look at the statistics, that's about 23% of the cases, but the population vaccinated in August was about 52% of the population. And so, so that, that's good news, that vaccination is still, you know, providing some positive impact. The other good news, I've, I've been watching the, the data for pediatric hospitalizations. You know, I know that's all of our concern, even amidst this, you know, heated debate on how to best handle that. And, and the good news, our, our region, which I think is 13 or 14 counties or something, I think we have right now five children hospitalized with COVID, and four of those, I believe, are up the hill at our, our Great Children's Hospital. And thankfully, none of those are in the ICU. And I think we can all, you know, celebrate that that is, that is the case, and we, of course, pray for the families of those, those children, that they hopefully don't end up in the ICU. So I, I just wanted to, to pass along some, some good news, and before any tweets would go out that would question the data, just look it up. This is all from Michigan.gov.
Commissioner Skiggs.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I wasn't planning on speaking, but, so I'll make it brief. I think all of us listened on what happened on the 26th. I know for certain I did. And I know some of the things that I heard. I don't know if everyone was listening enough to hear those things. I heard a woman threaten World War III over a mask mandate. I heard a man from Sparta reference an individual and said that we should be concerned about this, who got a bulldozer, barricaded it with concrete, and knocked down government buildings and the buildings of elected officials, because he was angry with his local health department. That was a clear and obvious threat of violence. It was couched, and you should look it up. This is my time to talk, Commissioner Antor.
Commissioner.
It is all there. The, Chair.
Yep, Tom.
So I heard that. I heard a man tell the Health Department that they should bring guns. I saw another man keep his hands, keep one of his hands, behind his back the whole entire time, which I interpreted to be a rather, given what he was saying, a physical threat. I don't need to dignify those acts. I don't need to respect those acts. I condemn those acts. And I urge all of you, this petition from our constituents is pretty simple. The fact that people will refuse to sign it is shocking. They simply are asking us to condemn all forms of threats and intimidation made against local, state, and federal public servants. We want to be united? Let's go ahead and issue a statement that is clear. It doesn't need to be a statement about mask mandates. It doesn't need to be a statement about passionate language. But we ought to make a statement that makes it clear that we will not stand for our employees being threatened. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, thank you. I want to thank our Chair, Mandy Bolter, for responding almost instantaneously that violence would not be tolerated against our staff, and the fact that she was speaking for all of the commissioners. I ended up getting a copy of that, and knowing that people in my community too were also asking for something similar to what we received today from the signatures of the entire board denouncing violence. I've been on this board five years, and I don't think there's one commissioner. I know there's not one commissioner I could say that would spearhead violence or support violence. So looking at what Mandy Bolter had already issued, I started writing a few things and was wondering if we could get with Mandy and maybe a few other commissioners to come up with something together that's a joint statement, and at least bring it to a motion to be voted upon, just against violence. Because people had a right to be on either side of the issue. But you have fringe groups that no group wants to take responsibility for, and Black Lives Matter, I, I march with Black Lives Matter, and sometimes people will say Black Lives Matter brought violence, but it's seldom the people who are really trying to get their issue out, because they know it takes away from their issue. So we always speak against violence, and, and that's just activists, not elected officials, activists. We always speak against violence in the media. We always speak against violence at our protests. So I would hope as commissioners that we could come up with something that we could agree. That's less than political, less than taking side on the mask mandate. I support Adam London. I support masks. I know some people don't, but the violence, I think that's not political. I just think that's human rights. So I really support what was brought in today, but I think it's already been started with Mandy Bolter's first statement that came out. So I'll leave that alone. I also agree there needs to be an investigation into the lady that tried to run Adam off the road twice, pinpointing some times, streets where this happened at, and trying to find out who did that. Then I'd just like to say this, I have to say this, no matter what the results are, I have to be real. On this board, when it comes to politicians, politician, we fight sometimes, we argue. I wouldn't call it fight, I'd say debate. But I have, I have noticed since I've come to the board, two times where rules have been changed, and I'm talking about standing rules, two times standing rules have been changed for rules that I didn't break, but things that I did are defending myself, my community, and standing up to let you know institutionalized racism is real. When ICE was here, I remember joining them, because I had seen commissioners do public comment before. And I remember I did my public comment to say that racism is real. And the next year, the standing rules for us leaving our seat, that rule was changed, but when I did it, I didn't break any rules. Later, recently, this year, I was threatened to be censored. Other rules were changed, and standing rules. I wasn't threatened to be censored by Kent County Commission, but I was threatened to be censored in our caucus. And then I'm looking today, and I see commissioners, not just today, this month, I see commissioners, and this isn't a partisan thing, whether they're Democrat, Republican commissioners, I see rules being broke, that are rules and our standing rules, things we shouldn't do. I see those rules being broken. I don't see any accountability. I see new things being done that's disrespectful to the public, disrespectful to other commissioners by commissioners, both Democratic and Republican. I don't see rules being changed. I'm going to keep this short. When I, when I went to court as a kid in Kent County, a young guy, some of us were black, some of us were white, some of us were Spanish, the majority of us were poor, and a few had money. And I learned that justice was meted out difference, but I wised up. I said, you know what? I don't have to worry about that disparity if I don't do any crimes. So as bad as it was, and part of institutionalized racism, I said, you know, I know how I'm going to fight this. I'm going to stop coming to court, because it doesn't end up good for me or the people from my neighborhood. But now I'm a commissioner. Do I stop coming to be a commissioner? What do I do? And I, and I can tell you this, I'm not calling this board racist or prejudiced, because they're definitely not. I've had a chance to work with this commission, and I've seen this commission do more good by people of minorities, poverty, the public service. I'm so proud to be on the radio and tell people God gave me opportunity. I'm going to stop coming to court because it doesn't end up good for me or the people from my neighborhood. But now I'm a commissioner. Do I stop coming to be a commissioner? What do I do? And I, and I can tell you this, I'm not calling this board racist or prejudiced because they're definitely not. I've had a chance to work with this commission, and I've seen this commission do more good by people of minorities, poverty, the public service. I'm so proud to be on the radio and tell people God gave me opportunity to see inside people that work every day, and you can't pay anybody to do public service. There's not enough money you can pay people to put up with what these commissioners put up with. But if it's an oversight on how we're handling ourselves, if I can go through all I went through, at this point, I would just ask that we have more accountability. So somebody like myself, whether you agree with me or not, maybe you're upset that I'm telling you how I see things. And I have a lot of young men in my community watching me with this opportunity, letting them know that the American dream can come true if you work, if you study, if you educate yourself, if you, if you believe, and if you believe that, for those who aren't spiritually, I am, that God can open up doors that man closes. They're watching, and I just want them to know that everybody will be held accountable. And I don't know where to go with that. I can just say some accountability needs to be had, and it's not partisan. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Try and follow up with that. You know, I very rarely ever speak in miscellaneous, so you have to bear with me here. So from my perspective, and I'm in EMS, I think this should be all hands on deck. I don't get it. I really don't understand it. So this is a pandemic that's, you know, taken hundreds of thousands of lives. So when I look at scope of practice, you know, in my business, it's all scope of practice. If the medic's doing his job or not doing his job, scope of practice. I think Adam London is operating within his scope of practice. I may not agree with him. Lord knows, last 22 years, I haven't agreed with every, everything that the county has done or, you know, but hey, as long as Adam is operating within his scope of practice, I support it. So I guess in EMS, it's just not a place for a nervous person. And when you start having that cross-section of politics with public safety and, and, you know, the, the health services, it, it just creates chaos. So I don't understand why, it's just not all hands on deck. That's my soapbox I'm getting off.
Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the, the reminder at the beginning of miscellaneous as someone who fell short of that last time, so I, I actually do appreciate it. I wanted to read from a quote from an article from a few months ago from a county employee. "I've left my office in fear a little bit, had to look around and make sure no one was near me because of the nature of the phone calls. They are so angry. They just come at you, very hateful, not looking for answers but hating you, like you are the problem." That was a Washington Post article, but it was not about Dr. London. That's actually a quote from Jared Uzarsky, our Elections Director, from a few months ago because of angry phone calls of people believing that he and other election officials have perpetrated the, the, the big theft or fraud in election in 2020. And the reason I bring this up is that we are noticing a terrifying trend in our politics. It's not a trend that I think people on this board bear fault in, but we all bear responsibility to alleviate, which is the idea that if you disagree with an outcome or a decision, that you assume corruption, ineptitude, and foul intent. We believe that, we don't like the results of a 2020 election, so we believe that it was stolen and that the Elections Director, the appointed official is to be responsible. We don't like the decision of a health mask mandate, so we threaten, intimidate, and we assume the worst of intentions of our Health Department Director, believing that he is part of some mass conspiracy. And just now, we've heard allegations that our legal counsel for providing the illegal opinion that was verified by an outside counsel, that we cannot remove a health officer for the reason of instituting a man, a mask mandate because as, as my colleague noted, he acted within his scope of work, that that in itself is also inept or corrupt or a, a violation of their code of conduct. This is a troubling trend, and frankly, as I noted, yes, it is none of our fault that this happened, but it is our responsibility to not just decry violence, but to also decry the trend of allowing allegations that have no standing to continue. We have to nip disinformation in the bud, whether it's allegations of fraud, allegations of corruption, investigate legitimate concerns, absolutely. But we continue to allow this to permeate our politics, and it is becoming more and more poisonous. And so that's why I pledge to always nip disinformation in the bud, because frankly, if we don't, we're only going to see this happen again and again and again. And I would urge my colleagues to not only join in this, in a universal statement decrying threats of violence against our employees, as we've heard from our, from today's miscellaneous, but to also be very clear that we will not allow disinformation to permeate our politics. Thank you.
Any other miscellaneous today? Or are we adjourned? Anyone else? All right. I just want to say that, you know, I'm appointed as Chair of this board. I was appointed unanimously. Sometimes I get in trouble for speaking on behalf of all of you, but I'm going to go out on a limb and say that most everyone here agrees that violence is not acceptable. I already put out a statement. I'm going to read it. "As a large diverse county, we will not agree on every issue, but we are one community and should hold ourselves to the highest standard of public discourse. Threats of violence against any resident or county employee is without question unacceptable and should be immediately reported to the proper authorities." Now, we can continue to churn this, and we can continue to sign my document, your document, whatever, but we got to quit trying to score political points and get back to the business of the people and what Commissioner Breeby said. So with that, I'll call on Commissioner Antor for a motion to adjourn.
I've moved to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, we are adjourned. I am Kent County. I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
I'm Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County. Oh, yeah.